Do I have a motion to open the meeting? Laurie, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Teres?
Teres?
All right, here you go. All right, great. Thank you all for joining us tonight. We're doing this remote, kind of last minute due to the inclement weather, which hasn't really started yet, but the forecast shows that it's gonna, it's gonna start, you know, at any moment now. And being that we have some people who need to be part of this meeting who live further away, we thought it would, it would be more practical and more prudent to do this online. And so also for our community members that maybe don't want to come out in the weather, you know, they can participate this way. So this is what we decided to do. Now, in order to do that, we, we do need to have a policy in place. The law has changed that allows us to do this now past the pandemic, but we have to have a policy. So we're going to go ahead and we don't have the policy in the books. So we're going to go ahead and read and adopt that policy first. So we're going to go right to business of the board as our first item or our first order of business for this meeting so that we can do that first. Let me just get my place on this agenda. All right. So we're going to start out with section D, Business of the Board. First item is going to be to read and adopt policy, what's going to now, Policy 2311, Procedures for Video Conferencing Board of Education Meetings. Not going to read the, the policy. You, you could, you could look it up on Board Docs. It's again, it's 2311 now, but basically pursuant to Public Officers Law 103-A, the Board of Education is permitted to use video conferencing and/or remote participation to conduct its meetings. This policy would outline the video conferencing procedures. So that's, that's the, the policy that we're going to be, you know, approving now. So do I have a motion for this policy? Teres, second. Laurie, all in favor? Okay, so that is now policy. So I'll just continue on through the Business of the Board, being that we already started that section. First item is approve a bond amendment. Resolved that the resolution entitled Bond Resolution of the Tuckahoe Union Free School District, New York, adopted June 7, 2021, and amended February 27, 2023, authorizing the construction of alterations and improvements to all district school buildings and/or sites, stating the estimated total cost thereof is $19,150,000, appropriating said amount therefore, including the expenditure of $100,000 from the district's cafeteria fund, $750,000 from the district's Tuckahoe Union Free School District Capital Reserve Fund-2020, and authorizing the issuance of $18,300,000 serial bonds of said district to finance the balance of said appropriation. Be adopted by the Board, by the Tuckahoe Union Free School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laurie? So Faith, you want to just explain what, what, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Obviously, it's a, this is in lieu of, of the, of the bond passing and sort of the reconstruction of the financing. Do you want to explain that at all?
Yes. So what we did is we requested additional funding to complete the 2021 bond and to do some more work in the 2023 bond. So this is an amendment that essentially combines the two and authorizes us not to spend more than a total of $19,150,000, you know, and we also have the $100,000 from the cafeteria and we're using $750,000 from the reserve. So it, in essence, combines the two.
Right. Okay. And we're able to do that now because of item number two, which is the results of the vote. So let's go ahead and accept that, accept results of the February 15, 2020.
Can we, can we get a, can we get?
Oh, did I not? Oh, I didn't get a vote. I, thank you, Robin. All in favor of item one? Which is now item two, because we made item one the policy. Okay. You good, Robin?
Yes, thank you.
Good. Okay. So next is accept results of the February 15, 2023 vote. Resolved that the Board of Education accepts the results of the February 15, 2023 bond proposition vote as follows. Yes, 393 votes, no, 152 votes. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Laurie? Any discussion on this? Just want, I think collectively, I'll, I'll speak for the board. Just want to thank our community for the support and for the trust. We're very excited this passed pretty, pretty handily. I think it's a good sign of how our community feels and, and how, and the direction they, they, they agree with that we're on. So we, we appreciate the, the support and the trust. Thank you very much. All in favor? All right, great. Next, approve a settlement payment. Whereas a lawsuit being brought by Jason Ferreira against Tuckahoe Union Free School District with respect to events that are alleged to have occurred more than 35 years ago, whereas the school district has denied any fault or liability to plaintiff, to, to plaintiff in lawsuit, and whereas in order to avoid the expenditure of time, money, and resources in further defending the claims brought against it in, in the lawsuit, and without any admission of fault or liability by the school district to the plaintiff or any other person, the school district desires to fully and finally settle all of the claims in the lawsuit. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Education of the school district hereby approves a payment of $40,000 to plaintiff in full settlement, satisfaction and release of all claims that, that plaintiff has alleged or could allege against the school district and authorizes the superintendent of schools or her designated need to execute such documents and such, and take such other actions as may be necessary in further instance of, of the proposed. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Laurie, all in favor? Okay. Next, approve a stipulation of settlement. Resolved that Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District authorizes superintendent schools to enter into a stipulation of settlement on its behalf to resolve all claims in a matter involving student number 3030 on the terms and agree, and conditions reviewed by the Board of Education and Executive Session and authorized for settlement at its board meeting held on 2/27/2023. Do I have a motion? Teres, second. Cynthia? Any discussion? Forget discuss. This is a lawsuit. All in favor? Great. Okay. Approve a tax search. Resolved that in the matter of searchary proceedings instituted by Tuckahoe Developers Incorporated, Division of Poughkeepsie Shopping Center affected premise located at 62 Main Street, Town of Eastchester, and designated as Section 33 Block 9, Lot 10, Tuckahoe Board of Education hereby approves refund of school taxes in the amount of $27,424.77. And whereas pursuant to a resolution of the Board under Section 3651-1-A of the education law, the Tuckahoe Union Free School District established a reserve fund known as a tax searchary reserve fund to be used for the purpose of paying judgments and claims from the tax searchary proceedings in accordance with Article 7 of the real property tax law. And whereas the district is liable for searchary proceedings in the amount of $27,424.77, is hereby resolved that the Tuckahoe Union Free School District is hereby authorized to increase to, oh, sorry, authorized the increase of A11964.400 refund of relief property taxed by $19,726.79 and the decrease of A6, oh, sorry, A864 tax searchary reserve by $19,706.79 to be used in accordance with applicable laws for the purpose of paying legal fees, expenses, and tax searchary judgments. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura? All right. I'm just a little confused if the, if the, if the amount is $27,424, why are we only increasing by $19,706? I'm a little confused by that.
So $19,706.79 is the refund for every prior years to this year. I think it goes back to 1819 up until this year. So anything in a previous year comes out of the reserve and then seven, I'm sorry, $7,717 refunds this year's taxes, which just comes out of our revenue. We just reduce our current revenue. So we don't have to increase. We, so the Board approved the total refund of $27,424, but of that $19,000 relates to prior years, which comes out of the reserve, and $7,000 is just a reduction to our current year's revenue.
Which you don't need more approval for.
No, no, it just, when we close out the year, it'll just look like there's $7,700 we didn't collect.
Okay, I appreciate that. My, my, my apologies, because I actually see that you have it, you haven't written, you haven't explained in the admin content. I, I didn't see that. I apologize.
Okay.
All right, all in favor? Good, okay. Accept a donation. Whereas Tuckahoe Union Free School District has been offered a donation from Donald DiIzzo? Did I say that right? To benefit the Tuckahoe High School Scholarship in memory of Donald "Windy" DiIzzo at Tuckahoe High School. And whereas the district would like to accept such donation, is hereby resolved that the Board, that the district shall accept the donation from Donald M. DiIzzo in the amount of $500. Do I have a motion? Laurie, second. Cynthia? Any comment on that? Thank you very much to the DiIzzo family. Oh, I'm saying that right? Am I saying it right?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much to them. We appreciate that. All in favor? Okay. Prove a side letter. Resolved that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby approves the memorandum of agreement dated February 16, 2023 by and between the district and Tuckahoe Teachers Association as attached to the official minutes of this meeting and authorizes the superintendent to execute the same. Do I have a motion? Laurie, second. Laura? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay. Award and Agreement. Resolved that the Board of Education at Tuckahoe Union Free School District hereby awards the five-year transportation agreement for in-district home-to-school transportation to Academy Bus Company Incorporated, including the award for provision of fuel, gasoline, effective 7/1/2023 through 6/30/2028, unless terminated in accordance with the bid documents and authorizes payment thereunder. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Teres? Any discussion on this?
Yes, this is the same bus company we have now, right? That, that we've had maintained. And how, how are we doing with the lateness of the buses? And because I know that there's been a few colored, I don't know, blue bus, orange bus, whatever, that's been late. So how are we? How are they working to mitigate though whatever the issues have been?
So we've been working very closely with them on this. It's mostly the blue bus because we do, they had to find a substitute driver who was not familiar with the area and the route. But we've been working with them and getting them familiar with it. And I believe someone was going to either ride with them today or make sure they reviewed the route today and make sure they follow the route. And, you know, we showed them some shortcuts to come back from the last student drop-off for the high school to Cottle for dismissal because they were going through the town, which was causing them to be really late because coming through the village, there's a lot of light. So we made sure they know the shortcuts and the ways to go and where to do the stops properly so that they are not late. So, you know, we're working with them and, you know, it's, it's tough. They, they're having a hard time finding drivers, but I think we have a good driver. There is, there's a big bus driver shortage going around, but unfortunately, we had to replace one of the drivers.
Okay, that, that speaks to what I was going to say next. Like how do we, if there's a shortage, if this happens again, then we're back in the same boat, right?
Yeah, and, and they, they do have a, a, a pretty good pool of, of drivers because I did get nervous when we, when we lost the driver and we had it because there is such a shortage. So it was just a matter of this driver learning the route and learning the neighborhoods and, and the streets and, you know, maybe not coming through the village to come back, but, you know, having one of the dispatch show them the, another way to go that would save a few minutes off of the route. So yeah, and, and someone from our office, Ms. Barrows, reviewed with them again today to make sure when they're making the, the drop-offs, they know where they're going and how to get back to the school in a timely manner.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem.
All right. All in favor? Okay. Last two items are adopting the two policies we've been reading for the last two meetings. These are policy changes that are required by law that we had to make in order to be complying with the law. First one is our sexual harassment policy. So resolved to adopt policy 0110, sexual harassment, 0110.9.
I'm sorry, 00110.1.
Oh, okay. Okay, it says that the second time and not the first time. Okay, good enough. So sexual harassment 0110.1, sexual harassment of students, and 0110.2, sexual harassment of employees as attached to the official meanings of this, of this, of this meeting, excuse me. So again, this was a change we had to make. Our current sexual harassment policy is a policy that addresses the sexual harassment of students and employees. Due to recent changes in the state law amid a sexual harassment in the, sexual harassment in the workplace, the district is required to separate into three separate policies or regulations. One is the introductory statement. The next addresses sexual harassment of students and the last addresses sexual harassment of employees. The new policies also change the wording from shall to will or must. So it actually, so it's three policies. So the first, it is 0110, right? And then it's 0110.1, 0110.2. So it's actually.
Pardon me. That was my mistake.
Yeah, you actually had it, you had it written. You're right. It's correct. Yeah. So, so it's what's, what used to be one policy is being broken into three per, per law. We already read this twice. This is our third reading and now we're going to vote to adopt. Do I have a motion for, for this first? Teres, second. Cynthia? Any discussion on this? All in favor? Okay.
Teres?
Right here. And similarly, we have another change to make for our non-discrimination and equal opportunity policy. So resolved to adapt policy 0100, non-discrimination and equal opportunity as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. This policy is revised to reflect various amendments to the state executive law, education law, and civil rights law regarding protection against discrimination on the basis of traits associated with race. Policy also offers a blanket notice of non-discrimination of any, oh, sorry, of all legally protected classes addressing public notification requirements and setting up grievance procedure for allegations of civil rights violations. It also addresses website accessibility for persons with disabilities. Again, this is the third reading and now we're going, going to adopt. Do I have a motion for this policy? Laurie, second. Cynthia, all in favor? Okay. All right. So that concludes our Business of the Board. So we're going to jump back to the top of the agenda now and, and go back to our first item, which is going to be the presentation on, on the budget. So I will turn it over to Dr. Goodman.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees and school community. Thank you for joining us for tonight's workshop entitled Superintendent Proposed 2023/2024 Budget. The presentation will give a comprehensive overview of our development process, enrollment, budget additions and reductions, and our financials. I am joined tonight by Ms. Faith Sparks, Business Manager. Our administrative team will join us in subsequent presentations to allow for more specificity and in-depth discussion around programming, curriculum, and other investments. We begin by looking at the development process. The school budget provides the resources to support our mission, points of pride, and our strategic goals. Our work is driven by a very specific mission to prepare every student for excellence. The budget supports these three specific board goals. Enhance academic performance for success in college career and citizenship. Build strong relationships between the district and the community and ensure fiscal responsibility and sustainability. These goals have led our strategic plan and steer our work. The budget we present tonight moves us closer to achieving these long-term goals. The budget is based on the four pillars of our strategic plan. This proposed budget therefore promotes social-emotional learning, contemporary teaching and learning strategies, programs to meet the diverse needs of learners and professional learning to build our capacity in accomplishing our ambitious goals. Tuckahoe is a small school district with lots to celebrate. Included among many points of pride, we have a supportive faculty and staff, outstanding fine arts and performing arts programs, one-to-one devices for K-12, innovative lab and seam program, onsite instructional technology coaches, rich extracurriculars and community service projects, the full continuum of special education programs, research-based writing and early literacy programs, school resource officer, ACT/SAT prep courses, award-winning and accomplished athletic teams, after-school academic support programs, and universal pre-K program. This is just a sample of the budget supportive initiatives that will be a celebration. Our students achieve at high levels in many areas. In academics, our students have gotten already acceptances into many top colleges. Amongst them are Princeton, Wash U in St. Louis, Cordell, Villanova, NYU, Tulane, Northeastern, University of Florida, and many more. I don't have all of this year's scholarships yet, but last year we had over $7 million in scholarship and more than half graduate with an advanced regional diploma. In athletics, arts, and extracurriculars, we also excel. We're all league, all conference, all section, and national honorees. Community service club options, we have participation awards in NISMIA, entertaining and very impressive school productions, and debate, Silents Olympiad, and our club expands our students' experiences. We are Tuckahoe proud. With a sense of our priorities and driving goals, we turn to analysis of our enrollment and sections. As you can see, our college enrollment remains consistent. Although we are increasing a kindergarten section next year, we are decreasing a section in second grade. This has no budget implications and keeps class size small. Small class sizes are generally considered to be beneficial, especially on the elementary level for several, several reasons. And I'm going to review that view then because it's something that the Board studied last year. So with a small class size, you can give individualized attention, but fewer students in the classroom, students are able to give more individualized, and teachers are able to give more individualized attentions to each student. This allows them to better understand the strengths and weaknesses of each student and tailor their teaching approach accordingly. We also see increased participation in smaller classes. Students are more likely to participate and engage in classroom discussions and activities. They may feel more comfortable asking questions and expressing their ideas. And we also see improved academic outcomes. Research suggests that students in smaller classes, especially at the elementary level, may achieve higher academic outcomes compared to those in larger classes. This is likely due to the increased individual attention and greater opportunities for active engagement in the learning process. And finally, better classroom management. With few classes, with fewer students in the classroom, teachers are better able to manage behavior and maintain a positive learning environment. This can lead to a more focused and productive classroom experience for all students. Overall, small class size at the elementary level in particular, but I believe in all levels, can help to create a supportive and engaging learning environment that is conducive to academic and positive social-emotional development. Now we move to Tuckahoe Middle School. In the middle school, our population also remains steady, in line with board priorities. Our average class size remains low. And the same for the high school as well. We see some growth in the high school. Go to the next slide. You see some growth in the high school that's projected, but it's all maintains around the same. And we do have a good average class size in the high school also. We now move to budget additions and reductions. With our enrollment stable and our strategic plan in full swing, we are looking to build on the positive. So in reviewing the changes in staffing, it is important to look at these changes as an entire district. That's why we put the additions on one side and the reductions on the other. So let's begin with the elementary school. Following the advancement of student sections, there will be a reduction of a section in grade two and an addition of a section in kindergarten to accommodate smaller class sizes for the youngest students. So that's a wash. Meanwhile, following a cohort of students in grade five, there will be a reduction of a 1.0, that's one, one, one position in special education, which will be added to the middle school, high school. So that fifth grade special education teacher will move up to the sixth grade with that cohort of students. That fifth grade class had two special education co-teachers, so one will move up. Usually we have one for the grade, that one just needed more support. Now let's move down to additions in the middle school, high school. In addition to the 1.0 special education teacher at the middle school, again, taken from the elementary school, we are adding an additional 1.0, one person in special education for the needs in the middle school and high school. And they're broken out in, in terms of those bullet points on the side. We also are increasing an additional .33 FTE to allow for special education earth science lab. This will, this lab only meets once a cycle. That's why it's such a small percentage of a teacher's schedule. So in grade six, there's a 1.2 addition of a teacher. In grade seven, it is 8.78.4. Then in high school, we have a .4 for geometry and ELA to have a co-teacher in those classes. And again, that science lab is .033 because it meets once per cycle. I hope that makes sense. You can always ask questions when we're done. We are also adding additional electives in the high school after reviewing our survey of families who left the district. We learned that many identify the lack of electives as a driving force to transfer to private school. Next year, we will invest in new content, area electus, and ELA, social studies, and math. So next year, in addition to electives we recently added, like statistics and math or science electives like forensics, we will offer other high-quality, engaging electives in ELA, social studies, and math. Ultimately, this calls for a .4. Remember, teachers are 1.0, so it's .4 increase in ELA, a .2 increase in math, and a .2 increase in social studies. We will also be adding a .1 increase in ELA to focus on writing in the high school. In terms of reductions at the middle school, high school, there will be a reduction of a .3 due to restructuring our math symposium. So the math symposium has been something that, there's been a lot of questions around. So we're doing it a little differently next year. So we ended up being able to take some of that for our math elective and we're going to do the symposium in a way that we're going to really target kids that need extra skills for, if they want to take algebra in eighth grade or with our seventh graders. And a .1, a 1.0 reduction in the Tiger program as we have other supports in place with tutoring. So now turning to the district-wide impact. Because it sounds like we're adding a lot, but we're also taking away a lot because we want to be fiscal response, fiscally responsive when we think about our budget. Overall, we are proposing a modest increase of .433 in staffing district-wide. This represents a full-time equivalent increase of 3.933 and a decrease of 3.5. So again, we are proposing in addition, when you, when you add that up and then subtract it, totals less than a half-time employee. Now we turn to changes in curriculum. Proposed changes in curriculum and materials at William E. Cottle include resources that will help to further align our early literacy program with scientific findings regarding reading instruction. By purchasing decodable texts, we will create classroom libraries that match the scope and sequence of our systemic phonics instruction through foundations. Selections will be purposeful, it'll be, again, decodable books that students can read, and they will also be engaging and inviting. Meanwhile, after some reflection, we agreed to invest in Haggerty, which will provide a more systemic phonemic awareness program. This supports students in identifying sound and segmenting words, boosting their success with our foundation's phonics instruction. For our older elementary students, we are looking at our novel studies and taking the opportunity to introduce some new texts that align with more rigorous standards and encompass more diverse student experiences. Additionally, to meet the New York State Science Learning Standards, the new New York State Science Learning Standards, we will invest in an updated lab equipment for next year's science investigations. In total, changes to Cottle curriculum totals $19,300. Some of these purchases, such as decodable texts, will also receive state aid. At the middle school, high school, we will be investing in materials for the New York State New Science Standards while also procuring new materials for our growing engineering and STEM programs. We will also purchase subscriptions for writing software program, a new program that we're looking at, that we are using, actually we piloted it recently, called No Red Ink for high school, which builds stronger writers through interest-based curriculum, adaptive exercises, and actionable data. So we can actually see where kids are in their writing level and move them along. We will add vocabulary instruction with vocabulary.com, helping students develop a robust vocabulary improvement in all areas of communication, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And we will set aside money for new novels in the middle school that are similar to the elementary school, will align the next generation's standards. Lastly, members of our science program have been looking for a standard-based grading system. Akindi is a software that allows for assessment explicitly linked to the new standards and a data dashboard that provides feedback for both the instructors and students. The total of costs of the proposed changes to curriculum in the middle school, high school is $12,600. Our largest initiative for Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School is our partnership with Innovative Our largest initiative for Tuckahoe Middle School and Tuckahoe High School is our partnership with Innovative Designs for Education. This year, training will continue to support our previous cohort of teachers while introducing the principles of learner-active, technology-infused classroom. To a new cohort of middle school, high school teachers. Additionally, we are setting aside money for teachers to work on developing curriculum over the summer for our new elective courses. Total budgeted for professional development for that is twenty three thousand fifty. Meanwhile, we are looking to expand our art club and offering um new popular clubs. That we've, that we know students want, mostly funded by Camp Invent. There's a Camp Invent Foundation that provides a STEM program over the summer. We are just asking for some materials for that. Additionally, the middle school debate club has taken off with leaps and bounds. And also when we asked parents who left our, had their student leave our district for high school. Many of them said that they missed the debate team, their kids are really missing that. So we are putting a um, we're, we're putting a debate team in the high school. So that students can continue their journeys with debate. And we want to make sure that we offer that to them because it's such a popular club and it's, and it's really so um. Such a communication builder for our students and competence builder. The total budgeted change for extracurriculars is four thousand, seven hundred thirty nine. And then in terms of technology. In planning for changes in technology, we are entering a new installment of purchase agreements with our BOSI's. To fund the replacement of fun um Chromebooks in grades three, six and nine. We are also replacing aging smartboards with new interactive flat panels. At the conclusion of this year, we will have funded the replacement of all ARM-based project, projectors, saving us money on replacement bulbs. The total budgeted change for technology is twenty seven thousand dollars. But we also have a reduction in one-time expenses. So the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget included amounts for one-time non-recurring expenses. These are not included in our twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. These include, in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, we purchased furniture for the Cottle Library. The middle school art room and materials and resources for our latic learning spaces. In the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget, also included funding for the wireless upgrade project. Our wireless access points are at the end of their life and no longer supported. We purchased new ones and they will be installed over the summer. Also, the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget also included funding for the one-time purchase of curriculum materials that included multi-year subscriptions. Again, those were one kind, time costs that will be revisited at the end of their respective contracts. None of those are included here. So that's the total reduction of two hundred ninety-six thousand. So here is in total, with all the change to support the advancement of our strategic plan. We are showing a net reduction of one hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-one to these areas that were discussed in the previous slides. We will now shift to our proposed budget summary. Before we deep dive into the revenue and expenditure expenditures. Please note the variables and drivers that impacted our decision-making. Our primary goal when building the budget is to allocate our resources in a way that meets the needs of all our students in the district. By also being fiscally responsible. Ms. Sparks will also discuss the variables that financially affected the budget for next school year. Including high inflation and a big increase in transportation costs. Ms. Sparks?
Good evening. Thank you. Um, I'd like to jump in and just start with some quick facts about the tax cap. Tax cap was placed into law on June twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. The law places restrictions on how school districts and municipalities can increase their tax levies. The first year of implementation was the two thousand twelve, thirteen fiscal year. In the ten years of our tax cap, the tax cap era, Tuckahoe's tax cap levy has averaged one point nine three percent. The tax cap, which I'll also refer to as the maximum allowable tax levy permissible under law. Requiring a simple majority for fifty, fifty percent plus one of voter approval. It's based on a formula that's prescribed by New York State. Every school district has its own unique tax cap figure. It's not always a two percent cap. You know, we always hear it being referred to as the two percent cap, but it's not always. When calculating the tax cap under the formula, District A could have a tax cap of one percent. And District B could have a tax cap of five percent and both could be in compliance. The tax levy is, you'll hear us use that a lot, that's the total amount of property taxes a school district must collect to balance its budget. After accounting for all other revenue sources, including state aid and is adopted by the Board of Ed when adopting the budget. You can go to the next one. Okay, um, the two thousand and twenty-two, twen-, I'm sorry, the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Has proven more difficult than other budgets of past few years. Inflationary pressures are starting to catch up to us and with the tax cap, we are limited with revenue increases. The C P I or this consumer price index that New York State, O S C um, put out, the most recent one is eight percent. The tax cap formula directs districts to use the lesser of two percent or the C P I. While our expenditures are increasing at a rate at much greater than two percent for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. The district must use two percent as the allowable levy growth factor for our tax cap calculation purposes. There are two growth factors in the tax cap calculation that are set by the state. The allowable levy growth factor, which is C P I and the tax base growth factor. For two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, C P I is the highest it's been in a long time. I feel like I said that last year, but it's even higher this year. Um, given that the formula calls for the lesser of two percent. Or C P I, um, we have to use two percent. It can never be less than zero, so two percent is the max. We have no input and control over this factor. The other factor that is part of the tax cap calculation is the tax base growth factor. This is set by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance. And it determines the quantity of change based on information provided from local assessors. It measures brick and mortar growth of new construction. And significant additions to existing properties which increase the size of the base within the boundaries of the district. It can never be zero and the minimum is a one point O. Last year we were at the minimum one point O and good news for this year for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four. Our tax base growth factor is one point zero, zero, six, five. So this is an increase over last year's rate. So it's good news for us. Pilot revenues are a part of the calculation, capital exclusions, which is debt net of building aid. Um, when we factor all of this in, we are looking at a levy of thirty-one million, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, one seventy-two. For two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, it's a percent increase of four point three, eight percent. And a dollar increase of one million, three hundred thirty-three thousand, one ninety, and this is within the legal tax cap limit based on the formula. This slide is an illustration of the multi-step formula. As part of our buzzer presentation, it's important to note. While the levy, while the levy for the up and coming academic year is four point three, eight percent. It is tax cap compliant and within the legal limit. The tax cap law was implemented to ensure that property tax increases do not exceed a certain limit each year. The limit is determined by a formula that takes into account inflation and other factors. Each year, we carefully review and work through the tax cap law and the formula and have designed our budget in compliance with the law. We have ensured that the proposed tax levy increase is within the legal limit set by this law. This means that while the proposed tax cap increase is above two percent, the number we commonly hear when referring to the cap. It is still within the legal limit set by the state and is designed to provide a balance between meeting the needs of our students. And the financial burden of our taxpayers in this inflationary environment. We understand that increases in taxes can be challenging for our taxpayers and we've taken this into consideration in our budget planning process. We have worked to find ways to balance the needs of our students and the financial impact on our taxpayers and we believe. That the proposed tax levy increase is a fair and balanced approach. This chart shows a five-year projection of the tax cap formula. While this is only a projection based on estimates and information available to us at this time, you will see that the. The increase for twenty-three, twenty-four is four point three, eight percent, but as we look into the future. It goes back down to rates that are closer to two percent, which are more familiar to us. Here you will see a summary of our proposed revenue budget. Starting with real property taxes at the top at an increase that is, is within the legal limit. Pilots and sales tax. For a number of years, our budget for sales tax revenue was conservative, conservative as we were in an unprecedented pandemic. As things have returned to normal, we are seeing trends that show we can increase this projected revenue for this category. The district has two pilots, Tuckahoe Housing Authority and Marble Hall. Next, we have charges for services, which is primarily non-resident tuition, which includes students placed in our district. Through C S E meetings and other, with other districts paying the tuition. And it also includes some students that are parentially placed. The other revenues category includes revenue items such as facility use fees and interest. As interest rates have been rising, so have our interest earnings. We were able to significantly increase this revenue budget, the revenue budget for interest income. Next, we move on to state aid. The governor released her budget on February first. Her proposal would fully fund for the first time. The amounts the state is legally obligated to send. School districts from, in the form of foundation aid, their large, the largest funding stream from Albany. Hokel had agreed in two thousand and, in a two thousand twenty-one court settlement to comply with that obligation in the upcoming budget. Under the proposal, Tuckahoe was scheduled to receive, receive a foundation aid increase of nine hundred and thirteen thousand and sixty-eight dollars. Or thirty-seven point eight, eight percent. Right now, a hundred thousand dollars of this increase is to be set aside for high-impact tutoring for grades three through eight for math and reading. However, we are awaiting additional information and guidance on this. As we anticipated, there is also a decrease in our building aid of approximately three hundred thousand dollars. As the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, the current year we're in, is our last year that we're getting building aid on our two thousand and six project. However, we are working on with S C D on our formula that they're using to calculate building aid as we, there is an error in that formula, but we still. Are anticipating a reduction of three hundred thousand. Overall, our state aid increase is projected at nineteen point five percent or eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, seven hundred thirty dollars. The executive budget for state aid, which is the one the governor put out on February first, is the starting point for budget negotiations. Between the governor and the legislative houses. This will be followed by counter proposals before enacting the final budget. The deadline for the budget to pass and be considered on time is April first, two thousand and twenty-two. Um, the governor's proposal does include an increase in U P K funding of a hundred and eight thousand dollars. However, we are awaiting some more guidance on that as well. So we're hoping to put more information out to the community on that when we have it. Um, and I just want to cover one other thing on here, our federal aid. We are seeing an increase in federal aid, which is Medicaid reimbursements for students that have Medicaid. Um, and if you look at the last item on here, we are showing that we can reduce. Um, appropriate a fund balance line by five hundred and thirty-seven thousand, which um is great news and puts us in a really good position. This chart shows um a pie graph of the numbers we just presented. And you can see that real property taxes make up seventy-nine point one percent of our revenue budget, the largest piece of the pie. Now we pivot from revenues to expenditures. We will discuss some of the driving factors impacting the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. With salary and benefits making up seventy-one percent of our budget. We consider our collective bargaining agreements, which we're happy to say um have all been negotiated all the way out through two thousand and twenty-five. Which makes it fairly simple to project forward. Health insurance increases, we participate in two health insurance consortiums. Our biggest one, Swiss chip, is projected to increase eight percent. And nice ship um is our, we don't have as many participants in is fourteen point one, seven percent. The state retirement systems, the teacher's retirement system is estimated to be at ten percent of salaries next year. The current rate is ten point two nine and the employees retirement systems are for um. Non-teachers is going to increase to approximately thirteen point one percent. The current rate is eleven point six percent of salaries. Now we move on to transportation. All of our transportation contractors notified us this year that they will not renew for twenty-three, twenty-four at C P I. They are looking for an increase significantly larger than the already high C P I number. The law states that a district cannot extend a contract at a rate greater than the May C P I. Anything over that would require us to go out to bid or R F P, which we ended up doing. We received the proposals for our home-to-school in district transportation. And the lowest responding bidder was third, a thirty-seven percent increase over our current contract. That's pretty big. Um, the other cost that we're seeing significant increase in is facilities and utilities costs. Electricity costs are increasing at approximately thirty-two percent. Natural gas increasing at about forty-three percent. Other utilities such as oil, sewer and water, we're projecting twenty-nine percent. And facilities maintenance costs are increasing thirty-seven percent. These are costs for maintenance and minor repairs such as plumbing, electrical, HVAC, as well as painting and carpentry niche. As we mentioned before, while there are a number of budget drivers that are increasing significantly. There are also some budgetary reductions that we are taking into account. There were some one-time expenses included in the current two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year budget that are not going to recur next year. These are furniture and equipment purchases, a decrease of seventy-four thousand. Our wireless upgrade project, a decrease of a hundred and eight thousand. And one-time textbook and curriculum purchases, a decrease of a hundred and fourteen thousand. This chart shows a breakdown of the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget by function. The twenty-three, twenty-four initial proposed budget is forty million, one hundred thirteen thousand and sixty dollars. This is a percentage increase of four point nine percent or one million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, five sixty. These numbers reflect the budget highlights that we discussed in previous slides. General support category includes costs related to the Board of Education, Superintendent's Office, Business Finance and auditing. Personnel, legal expenses, operation and maintenance of building. Central data processing and special items such as dues, assessments, refunds of real property taxes. B O C's capital and administration charges. The budget to budget increase for this category is six point six percent. The largest drivers of the increase in this category, we were seeing in facilities and utilities expenses. The category of instruction includes our cost for curriculum, professional development, instructional materials, principal's office. General and special education, school library, A V, technology, guidance, psychologists. Health services, co-curricular activities and athletics. This instruction, the instruction category is increasing two point eight percent. The category of pupil transportation is increasing at twenty point six percent of four hundred and nine thousand, seven twenty-seven. As discussed previously, we are going out to bid this year for all our contracts. So we did receive our home-to-school and that was thirty-seven percent. Um, our out-of-district and special education, we have not received those bids yet, back yet. So we are projecting increases on those. The budget for employee benefits is estimated to increase by five point four percent. That service budget to budget increase is fifteen point six percent or three hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight, twelve. These numbers have conservative projections for short-term financing for both the current capital project and the new two thousand and twenty-three project. We anticipate having to issue short-term debt for a portion of the newly approved two thousand twenty-three project. As work will be starting before July first, two thousand and twenty-three. The inter-fund transfer, transfers category you will see has an overall budget to budget decrease of two hundred thousand dollars. What we took into account here is that we just passed our two thousand and twenty-three capital project. And much of the money we would budget in transfer to the capital fund was for repairs of infrastructure. And being that we just approved that, we did reduce that line down. It also includes funding for our E S Y program, which is um a special education summer school program. You move to the next slide. This, this shows um the chart we just presented as a pie chart. And you will see that instruction is the biggest part of our budget at fifty-four point six percent. And employee benefits is the next largest. This chart takes the same budget numbers and just shows them in slightly different categories. It shows, it's more specific is what portion of the budgets are salaries, benefits, materials, supplies, contractual. It shows it's more specific is what portion of the budgets are salaries, benefits, materials, supplies, contractual costs. BOC services and et cetera. And if we go to the next chart, you'll see that salaries uh is about fifty percent and benefits is twenty-one percent. So salaries and benefits make up seventy-one percent of our budget. In summary, the proposed budget is forty million, one hundred thirteen thousand and sixty dollars. This is a four point nine percent budget-to-budget increase or one million, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, five fifty-nine. The proposed tax levy increase is four point three eight percent and is within the legal tax cap limit based on our formula. Where does this leave us? We are required to have a balanced budget. Taking the proposed budget, we have a budget gap of eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight ninety-seven. How do we close this gap? Increase the tax levy. Utilize fund balance, cut expenditures. Historically, the district has used appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. As you look at this slide on the next page. You will see that we are proposing to appropriate eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars of appropriated fund balance to balance our budget. And this is in line with our goal of reducing reliance on appropriated fund balance, which is our savings to balance our operating budget. So we are moving in the right direction. A budget is a reflection of a district's values, and we believe the proposed budget captures our innovation and commitment to our students.
Okay, um. Our highlights from its staffing that supports favorable class sizes. We also are excited that this proposed budget allows for professional learning and new programs that promote. Innovation and critical thinking. This budget reflects a focus on early literacy and rigorous science standards. It also expands opportunities for advanced courses with new electives in all content areas. Our proposals are linked directly to our strategic plan, and they include all of what is on this slide. Um, it responds to our plan, staffing for favorable class sizes, professional learning and programs and innovative practices. Academic interventions, innovative courses and extracurricular activities, a focus on literacy and writing. The increase in electives, especially continuum, increases the use of instructional technology to personalize learning. And scientifically-based instructional models. Our proposals are linked directly to our strategic plan. And we appreciate the support of the board and the community as we enact a plan that prepares every student for excellence. Here you will see our budget calendar. We kicked off our series of conversations with a comprehensive overview of the financial landscape and then update on our priorities and commitments. Tonight, we've provided a comprehensive overview of the superintendent's proposed budget. While you may have some questions this evening, please note that the following two sessions allow us to dive deeper into each building. On March thirteenth, we will focus on the middle school, high school. Joining us will be Dr. Linehan, um assistant principals with him, Dr. Keo and Dr. Sweeney. They will provide more information about our information, about our work with learning active, technology-infused classrooms, curricular initiatives. And changes in standards. On April third, we will turn our attention to the elementary school. We will be joined by Mr. Marash. Mr. Co-Gallen, Dr. Keo and Dr. Sweeney, who will all talk about the work in which the building has engaged related to integrated code teaching. Literacy and changes in standards for science. We will also make sure that there are no questions left unanswered at our meeting on Monday, April eighteenth, where the board will vote to adopt the budget. On Monday, May eighth, the administrative team will present the final budget to the community for a hearing. Before the annual vote and trustee election on Tuesday, May sixteenth. Thank you for your attention to our district's proposed budget, the rainbow that's shown bright over our cattle field. The evening before ribbon cutting is a perfect symbol of the potential that comes from our community's investment in our students' success and experience. Tucko truly leads the way. I am now happy to open the floor up to discussion.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Very well done, as usual. So yeah, I have a couple, couple of questions and comments. So I guess I'll, I'll go first, um. That slide that you showed, I forget where it was, um about projected. Um. Increases for the years to come. So I, there was a slide where you showed. What our levy increases has been. The proposed levy increase of four point three eight, and then you showed a projection of like two point five four, one point two eight, one point two seven and point one nine. How confident are we in those projections? How do we know that? Like, wh-where is that coming from?
So that's taking um. Information that we have now. So we know part of the tax cap includes our pilots, which we can project. Our debt service and our building aid, which we can project. You know, the, the numbers we don't know, which we're just using what we have now is what our tax-based growth factor is going forward. Uh, last year it was one point oh, this year it's one point oh oh six five. So I kept it similar to what it is this year, um but that we have no input over, no control over. And it's just given to us by the state, and that could impact the numbers. Um, and then the um CPI, the allowable levy growth factor, you know, I was assuming two percent going forward. You know, we're at eight percent now. So while it will come down. It might take a while to come down, so it's, it's with projecting two percent as, as a number. So that could change. And, and this is a document that um I'm hoping to present our long, long-range plan soon that we would update periodically. So if we're looking to and seeing, hey. You know, CPI is dropping pretty dramatically. We can go in and revise these numbers and look ahead and see where we are. But you know, if everything kind of stayed the way it is right now, that's how we would look. And, and things are pretty high right now.
And those are projected tax caps?
Yes. Yes.
So they look, the projections look great. They look very appealing, but. You know, when you go out. Four years and you get to point one nine, it doesn't seem very realistic to me that that's actually gonna stick, right?
Well, that year, um, there is not much change in, um, you know. We're gonna have to look closely at that year and the year after, because it, it might be around that.
All right, because let me, let me tell you why I'm asking that question. And, and, and this next question I have for you, which I'll dovetail it altogether. Is what, what is, I know, sir, you're project, you're allocating eight hundred and twenty-three thousand roughly from fund balance to balance the budget. What is the, what is the entire amount of fund balance that we have available to, to us to transfer?
Oh, um, so our, a lot of it is in reserves right now. So we have, I'd have to look and get that number, but right now we have one point four million, about one point four million in unappropriated fund balance. So um, that, that's what we have right now that's unappropriated. You know, we can't take monies out of. Certain reserves without taking certain actions and then just say, okay, we're gonna use that to apply.
I understand that some of the, some of that money is allocated for, um, for the liabilities, but.
Yeah, so we're.
We have more than the eight twenty-three though that we could. And I'm not, you know, you, I've been astonished um supporter of lowering. The um. The, 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 the amount of fund balance we need to balance the budget, and, and I really like to, the fact that we continue to go down. It's great to see that. But being that worse, the reason why. I was going down this line of questioning is because, because we were seeing a big jump up now this year in terms of what. The budget's calling for four point three eight. Um, if we had confidence in those much lower numbers going forward. Even though I'm someone who's big on lowering that fund balance budget for one time, I, I would consider. Dipping a little bit deeper into that po-pocket in order to bring that number a little bit down. I understand the recurring, you know, the recurring impact of that, because I know that. I know when you don't take the full allowable uh. Um, fun, you know, um, cap. You're losing, leaving that money on the table for every year forward. I, I, I understand that. But be that as it may, if we had confidence in these projected numbers being so low. I would personally be. You know, willing to entertain a little bit higher of a fund balance pull. To bring that number down a little bit further, knowing that we have good years ahead of us, but. I'm not hearing a whole lot of confidence from you that these numbers going forward are really gonna stick.
So uh they're based on projections, and you know, we don't know what our growth factor will be next year. And, and we don't know, you know, I'm assuming CPI could, will probably be two percent next year, but it's, it's just an assumption. So um, you know, it's something we can keep a close eye on these numbers. Um, you know, CPI is at eight percent. So it would have to come down pretty significantly in the next year for it to fall below two percent.
Yeah, and, and then the other question or comment that I had was, you know, I know you said a big driver, it seems like the biggest drivers. In terms of changes, transportation. Then another big one is, is um the facilities and utilities cost. Um, but how much of that do we think? We're gonna be able to offset from the work that we're gonna be doing with this new bond. We've been saying that all along, that a lot of the work that we're hoping to do in this new bond. Is going to, I know the energy costs are increasing because the cost of energy is increasing. I, I get that, but, but in theory. But the work we want to do in, 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 in a short period, you know, next year or two, we should be reducing our energy costs pretty significantly, right? I, I don't know, it's, I don't know how. If there's any way you could actually put a number on that, I, I'm guessing maybe you can't. Um, but I'm just wondering how much? Can we factor that in? Can, can, can we, you know? Have confidence that maybe those numbers won't be as high when we do some of this work?
So that, that would be for a few years out, because the work we're doing on infrastructure is not going to be started till next. Till summer of twenty-four. So we would still have to consider these costs for um this up and coming school year. And if we start in summer of twenty-four, it might go into maybe the, the fall of twenty-four. So we wouldn't really see any potential savings till at least another year and a half, two years. So we.
Yeah, I know, I, I know, but you know, but the four point three eight. Increase to our taxpayers stays forever. You know, like, so. And, you know, and, and I understand, yeah, the repercussions of not doing that, but I'm just saying like. Uh, I'm just, I'm really in my mind trying to see if there's ways that we could bring that number down a little bit. Um, you know, it's a big number, and, and, and I, and I get it. It's not totally shocking to me because of what's been going on in the world. Um, you know, in terms of inflation and, and all that, so it's not like a shocker. But you know, we, we haven't had to go all the way to the tax cap in many years. So, so if you look back, most, since I've been on the board, we've never, I don't think we've ever. Asked the community for the full tax gap. We've always come a little bit lower than that. Um, so you know, if there's a way to do that again, especially with being so high. I would love to try and find a way to do that, you know, um. Understanding that we, you know, we are a little bit of victim of the, of these times. And I also, again, understand in our communities, understand that when you don't take the full tax cap amount. You can't go back later on and recover that money, so. It, it is, it is impactful, but you know, it's a big number. We've been asking a lot of our community of late, so if there's some ways we can bring that down just a little bit, I would, I would love to see. Um, and explore that. So one thing, if you can get back to me, just so we know. And I'm not trying to contradict myself here, but just so we know all our options. What is the full amount of fund balance? That we, you don't have to answer me now, you can get, get back to me later. The full amount of fund balance that we could draw from, that is available to us to draw from. Um, ab-above that eight twenty-two or eight twenty-three, if, if we wanted to sort of find another way to bring that number down.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
So I'll give someone else a chance if they have any questions or comments.
I think also the question is, if we did take more from the fund balance. Would that change to the tax increase be significant or not? Because I, I don't know, just thinking about the overall budget of forty million. And we're talking like eight hundred thousand versus a million. I don't think we're gonna see a huge shift, and I could be wrong. Um, but I also think that information would be useful um for people to better understand the finances.
Yeah. Well, if we took, what we do last year, one point three? One point three, right? So if we did, I'm not suggesting that we do that again this year. I'm just, I don't even know if we have that, but if we did, to, to your point to us, if we did one point three. Now the increase would be, would come down to what? It would come down. Another four, no, about another five hundred thousand, roughly, right? Um. So.
Yes, it would bring it down.
That's.
Right, no, by what percentage would it decrease?
The tax levy?
Yeah.
I think by like almost a percentage and a half, almost two percent, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling it up, because I did actually run some calculations on this.
Yeah, the transportation, um, how long is that contract? And is that sort of stay that, it's two, up to two million now for the busing?
Yeah, that's a five-year contract unless, unless we end it early.
And so does it stay the same every year? Do they, is it built into the contract increases each year?
So it's built into the contract to have a five percent increase each year. Um, and then once with the way the transportation contracts work with SED is after your initial five-year term, you can. Term, you can only extend at the May CPI number that they say you can extend at. So we're already past our five-year term, and they've no, the contractors, none of them want to renew at CPI, so.
Right, it's a lot.
It like blows my mind.
That's crazy.
So a five hundred thou, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, you, you're gonna say what I just said. Go ahead, you go for it.
It's a five hundred thousand dollar um decrease to the levy would. I bring it down to, um, I'm sorry, hold on, uh, two, about two point seven four percent.
Yeah, that's, that's what I got, I got two point six, yeah, so that's significant.
You mean another five hundred would bring it down that much? Another five hundred from the, from the, from the fund balance, from the reserve, if you brought over another five hundreds, what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But again, and, and that's why I think we should consider, but you know, understand that. The, that five, now we lose that extra five hundred thousand. Of tax levy every year going forward. So that's yet to remember, because when you increase the tax levy by four point three eight, it, that's, that now becomes a new tax levy in, in perpetuity. So until you increase it again, which you always do. So, so when you, when you take, when you take five hundred thousand away from the levy this year. That, that's five hundred thousand every year forward, so.
And it could skew the future numbers of the projected um levy, and I could recalculate that as well. It could slightly skew those on where we think we're gonna be going forward.
Yeah, um.
I, I think it would be um. Important information for us to have that, though, just to see. And obviously, your recommendations face us if you think it's a, you know, wise fiscal. Decision, but um. I, my comments were similar to Pete's, so. I don't really have anything else to say, other than um it was a great presentation. And I'm always very impressed by what you can do for, you know, professional development and the students. With really relatively a small amount of money. Um, I'm always shocked by that. I'm like, wow. And um, I'm also very excited about everything that's coming. As far as, you know, um, the genomic awareness, I think that's hugely important. I'm very excited to see the class sizes in Cottle, especially in the lower grades, maintaining it under twenty. I think that's hugely important. That's been one of my personal missions as a board member. And um. You know, I think it's all, it's all very positive. So I want to thank you guys for your efforts. I know these presentations take a ton of your effort and time, too.
Thank you.
Yes, I agree. Um, I'll just uh also had similar questions, um, and the transportation was one of them. So yeah, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. Um, Dr. Goodman and Faith, you guys put a lot of time as stress that into this. And I think I'm excited to hear about the um programming too, like when we have a little deep, as you said, you know, um. We're gonna dive a little deeper and let the community see what's coming. I think that. Uh, I was just actually at the school today. I had a, uh, we had a little basketball thing for the boys going off to their playoff game. And um I snuck up to the library. Um, it looks great. The door was open, by the way, so I didn't break in. But um, it looks great. So it's very exciting. So you know, with everything, it's, it's very positive. I know we're in, we're in times that are very um fiscally challenging, for sure. Um, and so I do, I do, on the other hand, feel that our, our community is is kind of excited for a lot of the changes that, that have. You know, started to come, and uh it does take time. And so, you know, hopefully we'll be able to see some of the programming come together with all the other changes. So I'm excited about the budget. I think it looks great. I am a little bit, you know, as Pete said, the four numbers a little, we haven't seen that number. Um, although, although I will say when I first moved to Tuckahoe, I saw ten and twelve. So I've seen the range of increases. We don't want to go back to that, but um, but I do appreciate all the time and effort, so thank you.
Yeah, not, not to jump at a turn, but I, I think we have been spoiled for many years, which is a good thing. But um, the only reason. But um the only reason why, you know, I think I, makes me pause a little bit, is that we have been asking a lot of our community in the last two or three years through bonds. Those things add up, you know, so like, but but yeah, I mean, yes, we have been spoiled for for many, many years, because because um prior years, ten years ago, the numbers were much more scarier than four point three eight, so, good point.
So I'll jump in next, if that's okay. I'm looking for, thank you for this wonderful presentation. Um I echo Pete, Laura and Tress um on, you know, some of the questions about the budget um in terms of the levies and increases and all. Um and I wanted to, I'm also looking forward to the upcoming meetings that we're gonna have regarding curriculum and instruction. Um specifically, the No Red Ink, the writing program. Um what sort of um equipment will be added to the science um labs or or uh classes that the students will have? Um I am excited about the debate team con- um continuing. It is a wonderful integrative way to um make sure that our students are building upon their critical thinking skills. That is wonderful. Um let's see what else I had here. Um as far as the decodable books, are they gonna be decodable books that Foundations puts out? Or will they be, because I know when I first came to the district eleven years ago, uh there were some teachers who were participating in um Lucy Hawkins uh Writers and Readers Workshop, and as such, they had the Fontis and Pennell, they had the um leveled books and all of that. So um just wondering about like if those, those um small books decoder, because some, within those, there there can be decodable books. So I was wondering if um will the professional development include more professional development on how?
Answer your question, the first. Will be aligned with Foundations. Um it won't be a um Lucy Hawkins kind of thing. It will be um, it will go along with the curriculum, which what we're trying to do is the scientifically based curriculum in reading. So it will go along with it.
Okay, and then um my next question had to do with because this is just an aside, you may not have, know this really right now, and maybe this will be something that will be addressed when the principles come into play. Um having talked before, um I know that every year, there are always some initiatives added in. Um there's always a pilot program coming, right? Because we're we're interested in constantly evolving and making sure that we're staying um you know, our finger is still on the pulse of making sure that our kids are competitive in their learning. So with that said, are we making sure that our staff, including our wonderful administrators here, that are even present? And those who aren't, um are we looking into um staff morale? Um them being maybe overwhelmed, um you know, because if we don't have our staff happy and feeling like they can handle things, then that doesn't benefit our our kids. So I was just wondering if maybe, if you can't address it today, maybe that's something that could be added in uh to make sure that our 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 teachers and and all of you are healthy and strong in all of the initiatives that we have coming.
Right, good points. And um for some of our initiatives have been, you know, voluntary, like the Learn Active Technology Infused Classroom. We had the first cohort last year, we're adding another cohort this year. You know, we try to work really closely with teachers and have them be part of what they're doing in terms of the, you know, the initiatives that we have, and we take their suggestions. No Red Ink actually came from a teacher as we were looking to update our um writing program. So with, you know, look, it's, it's, it's stressful being a teacher. I was a teacher too, and you know, we try, first everybody, you know, loved Lucy, Lucy Hawkins a little while ago, right? And you know, a lot of people feel like the rug was pulled from under them, because that's what a group of people thought really was the way to teach reading. So it is, it's stressful. And as we learn more, we change and we adapt, and we appreciate that our teachers are able to do that, because we're always looking at excellence for our students. But yeah, I definitely understand, you know, it's not easy.
Yes, not easy. So we just wanna, we have a wonderful staff, administrators, teachers and um assistants and um I, we want to make sure that they are working to, working optimally and that they're feeling good about everything, all the greatness that they're 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 imparting in our students. So that's why I brought that up. And then as far as the um, you said something, I think Faith or or Dr. Goodman about the money that's set aside for grades, was it five to eight for the math tutoring in the budget? Or something like that?
Yes, so um part of the governor's proposal was um they in, she increased our foundation aid, but is restricting some of it for tutoring. So we don't really have a lot of guidance on it right now. Um so it it's, it's something that we, you know, we we need more information for, and we're hoping by April first, we'll have that.
And it would only be for the um middle school?
It's three through eight. Right now, the way it's, right now, the way it's written, it's three through eight for math and reading. Um but again, like we we're all kind of waiting for more information on it. Um it's unusual to see foundation aid restricted, um because foundation aid is supposed to be a a unrestricted general aid that we can use. So um some, um it has been issue raised that um we, you know, to to ask not to have our foundation aid restricted um in that way. But uh we're still waiting on more guidance on how this is to be used.
Yeah, I I'm, you know, I mean, I'm sure there are pros and cons to both sides of it. But right now, I got excited, actually, when I heard that there would be money set aside for tutoring services for such critical points in the child's development. And um and particularly if it could be integrated into their everyday learning so that parents aren't coming out on top of their taxes, having to pay for extra tutoring services for their kids. So um that, that, I got a little excited, I have to say, when I heard that, and I'm hoping that that could be something that would really work and really benefit our little ones in third grade on up to uh eighth grade. That, that would be pretty, pretty cool, I think. Um so
We have been using our COVID funds for tutoring, so we do down at E Cap and at Cottle and at the library, you're tutoring, because that money, even what she's saying is to close the gap.
Right, exactly.
Um so we have been using that money. So I I think what Faith was saying, we're just wondering why she put it like that when we have been using it like that.
Right, right. Stricks aren't doing that. We just happen to be one of the great ones there. But you know, I I would love to see that um continue. And I was just wondering if there was any way, um when we talk about the budget, is there anything? I may have missed it. It's not my strong suit, the whole budget thing. I'm learning from all of you. Um but when it comes to um the tutoring service that, services that we have for those students who are doing the SAT learning and the ACT um tutoring services, we know that you know, the the wonderful generous families that have been providing for that, that's going to stop. We want that to continue. Is there any way, and it's tight, 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 tight budget, that we can make sure that we continue that um for students?
Well, we have that, we have it still.
Have it now, but the year, next year, we won't, right? After this upcoming school year, correct? No?
There, there, we'd have to probably limit enrollment in the program next year. So it, we would be able to run it, but it would be limited.
I think one of the things we are seeing that we really should look at is so many schools are not reliant on the SATs anymore, which is like, yes.
That's good.
So um it's, some of them, most schools, I mean, it really is beneficial if you could do really well on your SATs to put them in. But if you're, you know, if it's gonna stress you out and your grade point average is better, I mean, the guidance counselors are seeing this. Sometimes it's not as important as it was when we went to school and even when your kids went to school. All of a sudden, there's this new look at testing, because it doesn't tell you everything about a student.
Does not. Agreed, agreed. Okay. And then the last thing that I had a question on is um in the budget, when you talked about the pre-K and like the out-of uh district funding that we get. So are we trying to bring in more kids and more students who are out of district paying uh families? Is that what we're trying to do to support? And also with the pre-K, um is that dependent, is the budget dependent on the number of um students? Or or is that like a given?
So two things, those are two separate questions. So in terms of the out-of-district students, um you know, Dr. Sweeney has been really fantastic with bringing in students, because as you know, was it this budget or the one before? We, we were seeing such a decrease, because all the kids we brought in were graduating. They, they were older kids. So she has replaced all the ones who left, and she's continuing to look at students coming in. I am seeing, like when I first came, I wasn't exactly sure that it was paying for itself. But it really is a good thing if we could get tuition-paying students, number one. Out of district kids coming from other school districts. And if you know of any students, I'll put this out there, anybody knows, we also have tuition-paying students. We're less expensive than a private school. That helps those students and it also helps our budget, obviously. So those two things we're working towards. In terms of preschool, we're not sure what the increase means. You know, we have, everybody who um was on the um, who was on the, uh who wanted to, who were part of the process, got in.
So we have one waiting list.
We have one waiting.
We have one waiting list.
Opens up, so I would, I would hope that that money can be used a different way, but I think it might be for extra students. I would love it to be for three-year-olds. In my best world, that would be great. Um so we have to find out exactly what it's for. Tocco is one of the commu- few communities that our suburban school districts are even using that money or offering it. So um, you know, most, only the city school districts, for the most part, are offering the pre-K, the U P K. So um I think our community is really excited and happy, and we had such great feedback from the people who sent their kids to pre-K this year. In fact, kids are learning to read. I mean, it's just like amazing.
Yeah, I'm a champion for early learning, so I I think it's terrific if we can keep it in, you know. Yeah, yeah.
We, we can't tuition in to pre-K, though. That's just something I want to say. Yeah, we, we're not allowed to.
I meant, I thought there was a second question.
No, no, they were basically, you answered that. Uh thank you so much. I'm sorry I took up so much time, but I had a lot here on my
Good questions.
All right, I'm not gonna say much, because obviously much was said, and I do want to thank you guys, as always, for a great presentation. And I echo so many of the comments that all of my fellow board members made. Um I'm looking forward to, as I'm sure everyone is, to the next couple of presentations where I'll kind of reserve, because I'm gonna wait to hear what they have to say, and if there's additional comments or questions I have, I'll reserve it for that time. But thank you so much.
Thanks, Cynthia.
Thanks, Cynthia. I have one follow-up. Um they, the foundation aid, I was mentioning before, I meant to ask this too during during the presentation. So your budget doesn't account for any foundation aid, right? The the numbers don't account for it at all, right?
What do you mean? No, we, we accounted for the, you know, the increase in foundation aid. It's in our
I was looking for the revenue column. I didn't, you were speaking about it, but I didn't see it there.
Yes, well, it's part of our state aid, so it's it's lumped in with all our state aids. So when you look overall at state aid, I think it was about a nineteen percent increase, but the foundation aid piece of it is thirty, it was like a thirty-seven percent increase.
Okay, so we're not, we're not, it's not likely that we're gonna see a bump up in additional financial, uh foundation aid? In terms of your budget, you 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 accounted for
This is it, yeah, we we accounted for it. This is it. And it's not, it's not like we're gonna, this was the last year of the phase in of foundation aid. So going forward, we'll probably be looking at the, the due minimum increases of three percent that, you know, are 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 out there.
Right. And then my last question was, on the professional um development money, the twenty-three thousand or so, um is that in addition to what we spent last year? Or it's in addition, so I'm assuming it is, because we we spent a decent amount last year, too, as well. On top of that, right?
Yeah, we decided that, you know, and I think we heard that from the board um that, you know, that is the direction that the district is going. We first thought that, you know, maybe people could train the trainer and all those things, but it really is quite robust, what we're trying to do. And um we'll present on that, so you'll get an idea of what it's starting to look like and what it's growing into.
Okay. And then my last comment, just for, just for the viewers, whoever's watching, and and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Faith, because I always like to put some number, I always like to put some context with these numbers, because these percentages don't really mean a lot. My understanding, too, correct me if I'm wrong, is every, every one percent increase to the tax levy is an average of about a hundred fifty-two dollars per year for the average household. Again, that's an average, right? That's a number that I, you you, that we had just a few months back, when we were talking about some of our um contract negotiations. We we asked that question, and that was the answer you gave me, so I'm assuming it's still accurate.
Yeah.
So that, so that means a four point three eight percent increase is some, somewhere along the lines of six hundred and sixty-five dollars more per year in your taxes. Again, as for the average household, that's not an exact number for everybody. It's all, it's all, it changes based on your, on your value. But just, just to put some context about it, so. Um, all right, that's all I had. Great, great budget. You you'll you'll get back to me, uh Faith, on that total fund, available fund balance somehow, just so we know. Yeah, okay. Um, all right. Anybody else on the budget? All right, so now we just have uh, we gotta jump back over to our agenda. We have to just do our consent and our personnel, which should be very quick. So let's do that now. Um motion to approve consent agenda items two through eight, do a motion. Laura, uh Lori, second, uh all in favor? All right, great. And then we have personnel. Okay, resolved at the Board of Education, it's Tocco Union Free School District, approves personnel action items A through K as outlined below. Do I have a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, any discussion on any of these? All in favor? Okay, so that brings us to uh the adjournment of our meeting, to have a motion to adjourn. Lori, second, Tress, all in favor? All right, everyone, stay safe. So far, I'm not seeing too much out there, so, um but I'm sure it's coming. Yeah, everyone stay safe, have a great, great rest of your week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.